From this chapter, and I know sidewalks and will be discussed at length in the next chapter on infrastructure.
But we do, you're absolutely right, we can't lose that, that's important.
Yeah, but I feel comfortable that the integration and the narrative as it was presented, there was an integration of connectivity, which really sidewalks and bikeways are connecting those pieces together, which I think I'm okay with.
And I think by extension of that, one of the goals in this section was to strive to make Picocino more walkable and bicycle-friendly or bicycle-accessible community too. So that was still one of the stated goals in this section.
I think all minor things, the first one was the track at the school is just awesome, the new track. And probably gonna make this table as a place where you can walk, I would think. I mean, it's a nice place to walk. They said the track, the high school track, the new track they did.
Oh, the brand-new track that should be available for the whole community, yeah, absolutely.
And I don't know about, there's like one light there, I think, but it would be nice if that was lit. Or it could be like the tennis courts, because a lot of people don't have schedules where, you know, they want to go for a walk at night. Most of the year here, it's very walkable, you know, the evening hours. So that would be one thing. I guess the municipal, yeah, that says walking path, that's good. Because they have the nighttime light thing, I know some people on the seafood festival, when they put up the lights, they're like, hey, there's only some lights so they can walk at night in the municipal park. Not that they're going to get mugged or anything, there's a lot of varmints and critters in there. And then, I guess the other thing too, and I don't know if this is here or not, is I like to fish a lot. And now you can't even use part of the pier because there's a gated lock there to try to rent the slips out. I understand what that's for, but at the same time, it's like the best fishing is at the end of the pier and you're just stopped halfway out. And I like to fish.
From this chapter, and I know sidewalks and will be discussed at length in the next chapter on infrastructure.
But we do, you're absolutely right, we can't lose that, that's important.
Yeah, but I feel comfortable that the integration and the narrative as it was presented, there was an integration of connectivity which really sidewalks and bikeways are connecting those pieces together, which I think I'm okay with.
And I think by extension of that, one of the goals in this section was to strive to make Picocino more walkable and bicycle friendly or bicycle accessible community too. So that was still one of the stated goals in this section.
Yeah.
I think all minor things, the first one was the track at the school is just awesome, the new track, and probably want to make this table as a place where you can walk, I would think, I mean, it's a nice place to walk, so the track, the high school track, the new track they did.
Oh, the brand-new track that should be available for the whole community, yeah, absolutely.
And I don't know about, there's like one light there, I think, but it would be nice if that was lit, or it could be, like the tennis courts, because a lot of people don't have schedules where, you know, they want to go for a walk at night, most of the year here it's very walkable, you know, the evening hours, so that would be one thing. I guess the municipal, yeah, that says walking path, that's good, because they have the nighttime lit thing, I know some people on the seafood festival when they put up the lights, they're like, hey, there's only some lights so they can walk at night in the municipal park, not they're going to get mugged or anything, there's a lot of varmints and critters in there, and then, I guess, the other thing too, and I don't know if this is here or not, is I like to fish a lot, and now you can't even use part of the pier because there's a gated lock there to try to rent the slips out, I understand what that's for, but at the same time, it's like the best fishing's at the end of the pier and you're stopped halfway out, and I like to fish there at night, or anytime, it's one of the few places, I mean, there's a little pier there at the end of Rens, but can't catch much, I'll just, I'm personally, you know, just rooting for someplace that I can fish at night too, I don't want to have to drive to the Buckaroo Pier, but I will, so, it's minor.
Another option too, something that had strong support or strong mentions in the citizen survey were outdoor, more outdoor concerts, places for outdoor music, live music, or possibly farmers markets, it seemed like there was a lot of excitement for, I want to go somewhere and be able to watch some live music outdoors.
Well, Dan, you guys had the expert, the fellow who was talking about the Fridays that you had the other morning, he was talking about, you know, on a Friday night where you basically can stroll out there and listen to a band play or something like that, yeah, people are just itching for that kind of thing, pretty easy to meet your neighbors and...
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, some food trucks and...
I see point almost has that, not quite.
Yes, yes.
There's a bandstand, but you know, there's not really a place to sit.
One of the things that I've thought about, and it may be too complicated, but there are a lot of interesting suggestions in this section, but the real bottom line is, we're talking about one heck of a lot of money, and I would like to see if we couldn't put some estimate on some of the costs of these things, I realize we're talking about a plan that's for 20 years, and we can't forecast expenses out there, but even an estimate in $2017 or estimate in 2017, I think it, I think it would provide some frame of reference, because if I remember correctly, and I forgot to look up my CIP, but I think we were talking like 25 million for a rec center, which is more than the entire school budget, just as a, for instance, so I, I think that, you know, it's nice to say we'd like to do all these things, but in a planning document, I think we also need to sort of capture, you know, the practicality of what it's going to cost, and I, I don't know if that's possible, I don't know if we want to do that, I'm just kind of throwing it out there for thoughts at this particular...
I love that new track, but as I go around it, I always think, man, this costs some money, I mean, I'm not where they sell them for...
I think they're worth three quarters of a million dollars, wouldn't it?
I don't know, it's, I love it, but it's like, you can tell it's a nice track, and I'm thinking, it's kind of neat that that got to, I mean, for me personally, I'm thinking, why did the truck get to go and something else, expense on something else not, per se?
Well, I just, that's just my thoughts, is that it might, it might be useful to have that sort of information, but again, it might be very, very difficult, I know we collect some of those figures when we look at the capital improvement plan, there are, there are estimated costs in the CIP, not sure where they come from, but I think those figures exist, I don't remember, well, we haven't seen what's going to be the current CIP, we're still working on that, any of these things might be, might be included.
The other day I was walking through the, I mean, just as a, for an example, I was walking through the municipal park, kids on their bicycles, like, going through the creek beds and bobbing around, I'm thinking, oh, BMX track, kids love that kind of thing, and I guess the thing I was excited about is, kids weren't watching TV, they were out playing, it's like, hey, I know it can still happen, because we bought the house, we did it where we did, because we thought people would, the kids would be over there, you know, by the schools, and you just don't see them, you know, I don't know if it's because the parents don't want them driving on the streets or whatever on their bikes, but anyways, it's, again, I was excited to see they're actually playing outside, too.
And I, another question I have, it's just a question, I know that places like, there's some talk about putting in some parks or some recreation area legacy, I believe this, I believe it's called, is it Victory Cove, the new, the little housing development off of, I know if you go down the back, there's a small park area, they've just got some barbecue grills and, are those city maintained, or they maintained by the HOA, that, they belong, okay, then it doesn't belong here, I just didn't, I did not know, I saw, I said, gee, kind of nice, but I wonder where it came from.
That's actually a part of our open space development provisions, where we encourage that onsite recreational amenities be provided, given that 50% of the site is supposed to be preserved for open space anyway, I feel like that it's a great opportunity for them to have their site parks, you know, for their children.
I agree with that, I just wasn't sure who, who was now responsible for the maintenance of that park.
They will be responsible for it, and that's some of the pushback that we receive from the developers in, in some instances, luckily, Mid-Atlantic was very accommodating this particular development, but there is a liability cost that goes along with that as it applies to the HOA, and, you know, people are sometimes reluctant to add that burden on to a homeowners association, so we have not been extremely successful in getting these individual parks, what they typically want to provide is a walking trail through the open space, which basically meets our requirements, but if you've got a larger development like with Victory Cove, there's a lot of small children in that neighborhood, so I think it's a, you know, it was great that they offered up and decided to actually provide the playground equipment.
I thought it was very nice, I just wondered, I wasn't sure who owned it, or not owned it, who was responsible for it.
Can that also qualify as your wetlands area? I mean, like, we have to have certain areas we set aside for wetlands in most of these new neighborhoods, right? That just, can you make, can a park qualify?
Yes, sir, it's a passive recreational use, it's allowed in, in non-titled wetland areas, I don't think you'd want it in a wetland area.
Comments on recreation?
Again, it's very interesting.
Following up on the, the legacy is, because there was mention of the Oxford Run Canal Trail, will that be modified or eliminated with the addition of the Legacy Project?
It cannot be eliminated.
Okay, or modified?
From a modification standpoint, they will decide that at the engineering stage, and they have not yet submitted the plans, but I doubt very seriously that you'll see much modification to that canal, under the stormwater regulations, they basically have to control their water on-site and release it at a pre-development rate, so that kind of eliminates any major modifications to occur.
Aside the, the transportation, which of the chapters lies ahead besides the environmental?
The next is chapter seven, which is transportation.
Is that where, where we, I was curious about the status of, like, the bridge is going to go across the, with, you know, and that, and those, where can somebody go to find out the status of these projects, how far along they are, when they're going to happen, or, try to move ahead, maybe we should wait until next week on that one, or next meeting, it's more of a transportation issue.
Actually, that's a V dot, so any information that you would want on that project, you can go find the information, you know, as to the status of its development.
Ready to move on to schools? 800-pound gorilla in the room? I would certainly say that, again, there's a lot of information in this section, although it's relatively small, that it could probably be listed in an attached, things as career and technical education and extracurricular activities, although it's such a small section, I guess it really doesn't, doesn't hurt anything at all, I guess in my opinion, and I'm just giving you my opinion here, but in my opinion, I think there are two major factors here to deal with the school system that really affects the whole comprehensive plan and the CIP, and the first is whatever the decision's going to be about maintaining four schools or reducing to three, and a lot of the things that we see that we might need to do to school buildings, replacing HVAC, replacing roofs, doing something with gymnasiums, those sorts of things, those decisions really can't be practically made until a decision is made as to whether we're going to have three or four buildings, and if we're going to have three, which ones they are, so I think that, and I'm not being critical, but I think that somewhere in the plan we need to point out that that is a, that's a decision that has to be made that drives many other things, and quite frankly, it drives many things within the city, I mentioned before that, I believe this says that the school budget is over $22 million a year, it's a large chunk of the city's budget, and again, I, believe me, I don't begrudge them that at all, I have two kids and four grandkids that are products of the Picocino School System, I'm very pleased with it, but I, I think it really drives it, and I think the other deciding factor, Jay, I don't remember, were you on the planning commission when, when we took the tour of the middle school, when they had it in the CIP about eight, nine years ago, I don't know if you were or not, I know I was.
I was very missed, I think.
Well, I mean, you know, we went through it then, and I was, I was amazed then, and I remain that way, that, you know, that building needs to be fixed, that chest flat needs to, if we're going to keep it, it needs to be fixed, a lot of money, but I, I just think it's really critical that those two decisions, they probably tie into each other, but if we're going to keep the middle school, then I think that the city somehow has to figure out how to, what they're going to do with it to try to bring it up to speed, at least make it EDA accessible, and such things as that, now, those are my two opinions, and I would like to see them sort of strengthened in here somehow, although that's, I know that's kind of difficult, but that's what I would like to see.
Crazy, again, my, neither, both my kids graduated from Picocino High School, is there a, and get like more of a, where I grew up, there was a technical vocational high school, and bake, and that fed part of the county, in other words, if you want to be a welder, or if you want to be a carpenter or something, can you get, can you go to school, you know, where do you go?
New Horizons.
Okay, okay, thank you, that's, yeah, that's...
For some of those things, not all of them.
Yeah, well, there's the governor's school, but that's more for...
The governor's school is more, yeah, yeah, New Horizons will give you...
Thank you.
Quite a list of, of career-type education that students could take, they could take them in their, in their junior and senior years, up to half a, half a day each day, I believe, down at, down at New Horizons.
Is that a good, is that facility, do they need to repair anything, is that, is that pretty adequate for what, let's just try to think, if we could keep our facilities open, maybe...
In, in, yeah, I guess we're off on a little tangent, in my opinion, it's quite, it's quite adequate, but then I might be a little prejudiced, I have nothing to do with New Horizons, but I know a number of the people who do, and I certainly used to have a lot to do with it, I think it's a very good program, you know, it covers seven, seven or eight school districts, because there's more than just the six here, I think it's Gloucester as well, and they all, they all pay into it.
There are some vocational studies, like, things like computers and things like that, that don't necessarily, I, I was just thinking, if Picocino could set itself up to not necessarily be want to take some of those students, but at least have the ability to keep that, they may keep some of their own students, I don't know, just trying, I don't, I kind of don't like the thought of, once something's built, I feel like we ought to maintain it, I can't believe that Picocino's population will always not be able to, I think it's kind of the charm of the town, quite frankly, I like four schools, I think, I think, like, the kid, my kids personally, I think really it felt like it was more, I don't know, it's just nice to have one school, I don't know, I like that, and I like to keep that structure if we could, but that's what I was thinking, what else can we do if we have to?
Yeah, but it's real expensive to run one of those programs, that's the reason why they sort of consolidated New Horizons, but...
I don't even think we'd have to do it, my point was just simply that, you know, if we can be prepared, that's different than doing it, to just, I don't know, I like, as I said, I'd really like to keep the schools all open, personally, and I know it costs a lot of money.
Well, again, that's, fortunately, I guess, unfortunately, we don't have to get, we don't get to make that decision, the school board and our friends at city council get to make that decision.
I think it's part of, I think it was...
One of the, one of the comments, back to the written-in comments from the survey, the citizen survey, was the, the joint use of facilities, so one of the frustrations was lack of auditorium space to hold large events, and so that came through from an education side, but it also came through from the community side, so I would like to see, you know, as much collaboration, and I know scheduling can be a nightmare, but whatever investments we make into the schools, that they be openly available to the community either at night or at weekends, so that we really do have community schools rather than, you know, two separate parks and rec in, in, in the school division, there's a lot, lots of great suggestions, for example, night workshops for hands-on learning, computer classes, Vo-Tec, that type of thing, that I think could really land itself in a collaborative way with what the community is speaking for, as well as what the schools are providing, and you spoke to the track, as being a wonderful facility that, you know, is really for the community, so...
That was what I was trying to get at, I, I'm not saying we shouldn't have a whole New Horizons school, but it was just that there are facilities that are already here, and I think sometimes, I hate to see one of them closed and just sit there and watch and nobody do anything with it, you know, that's the worst of all, in my eyes.
And community theater, at one point in the, in the city's history, was a really vibrant community activity, and that closed, but, you know, it just takes leadership, critical mass of, of interested people, the movie theater, again, was another really strong preference for, to have something available, and if we had a joint-use auditorium, that could be for parks and recreation, performing arts, movie, graduations, presentations, I think, you know, we're looking at, rather than two separate schools versus community. One of the, one of the things that jumped out of me, I guess to me with the, the narrative and the, the prior, or the current comp plan and the proposed change, there doesn't seem to be a long-range plan that schools provide now, it looks like it, like stopped in 2012, we've got a strategic plan, is that, is that your, long-range plan for sexual, was I looking in the wrong spot?
Well, they have a strategic plan, I think it was last created in 2014, and then there's been yearly updates, but from what I understand, it's basically a list of, like, goals and challenges, and then a list of performance targets that are usually measured, and then they update those yearly depending on whether or not they satisfy them.
Yeah, I, I think that's what I found, so they were mostly quantitative type of goal, rather than qualitative, and I, you know, I thought the, the outline for the long-range plans that was included under the schools in the current plan was more of a qualitative vision sort of statement, that I don't see, I couldn't find anything equivalent that we, yeah, so the schools are 36% of our tax, of our tax base, so it's a huge investment. You know when the consolidation committee will be, to, to piggyback on Bill's comments about what to do before?
I do not know that for sure, the last I saw was, I watched the, the joint session with city council in August, and they presented their information to me, as far as I know, it's just going to be a continuing discussion.
Yeah, the last I read, the last article I read on it was that there was a presentation made to the school board, student enrollment estimates for, I guess, the next 12 years or so, and I think it was the school board, but I'm not sure whether it was the school board or school administration, but someone asked to go back and get some more information on the basis for those estimates, I know they're 10 years out, so from what I gathered, we're still looking at estimated student numbers to use to make decisions, I don't think there's been a, I don't think there's a really target, no, at one point in time, I read that the desire was to make a recommendation by the end of this calendar year, but somehow I don't think that's going to...
As far as I know, the numbers that the school board is using, and the school department is using, are from the Weldon Cooper Center, their population projections based on age, and I guess the latest estimates that they reported show that the school, the population of school-aged children is going to go very slightly slowly in a few years, is going to start climbing back up, but it's not going to reach the peak that was, say, 2003 or '04, or whenever that was.
I read somewhere in the last day or two, and I don't know where I read it, that said it would be right back up. I was surprised to see that when I read it, but I thought...
Other than York County and James City County, all southeast Virginia, enrollments are down, it's not, it's not something that is particular or peculiar at Picocino.
Yeah, it's nationwide. So, so the recommendation here, where it says recommendation that any... So the recommendation here, where it says recommendation that any closed school be repurposed to city offices, do we want to maybe hold on that until we know until exactly what, what school, what closure? Because I think there's an assumption that the purpose would be for the primary school, is that correct?
What if you just said to be determined?
Yeah.
Whoever school is closed, its future use will, then you don't have to necessarily hold on to that particular phrase during the comp plan, certainly if they've made a decision by the time that it's, as a recommendation, you could go back, but for some reason, it's not, then it's more tell someone that they need to, you know, research elsewhere to find out what the results were.
Well, the purpose of that line was basically to say that if a school is going to be closed, it should first be considered as some kind of a public use, a community center, a police station, office space, I was trying to cover my bases there, as opposed to, I don't know, selling it off and turning it into a commercial building, which I don't think anyone has seriously proposed, and that was just based on things that I've heard in this update process and in the survey process.
Repurpose for governmental use.
Yeah, because there's some models in the western part of the state that have done adaptive reuse of closed school buildings into housing, actually, able to sell them for private developers, particularly historic buildings, so I'm sure, you know, the school consolidation committee is really looking at all options on the table, I just sort of felt it'd be a little premature for us to jump until we...
Well, I would agree, we wouldn't want to jump into the specifics, I think it's pretty wide open, and my point would be, as I said earlier, I think that that decision drives things like, do we replace HVAC, do we replace roofs, do we, those kind of things, I don't think we're going to tackle those until we know what, some idea what we're going to do with buildings, because for instance, why replace, I'm just going to use the primary school as an example, why replace the HVAC in the primary school and then close it two years later and try to repurpose and find out we have to rebalance the whole HVAC system, you know, with a couple million dollars, maybe that makes sense to try to work those kind of things together in some comprehensive plan, that would be my recommended approach, not easy, it's easy to sit here and say, do it.
I think, too, is, I mean, you don't want to replace something like, in my town, my parents actually live in the elementary school, they're in assisted living, it was turned into a, you know, assisted living and independent living place, and so before you do that, you don't put a new HVAC, and then two years later they go out and something else.
You're going to have to rebalance the HVAC system, do that, that's my point.
But it becomes, it's on the developer's dime when it's repurposed.
If it's on that way, but if we decide to make it into a fire and police administration building...
Right, then it's on our dime, yeah, right.
Have we given you some information that you want, or some suggestions, or is there anything else you want?
No, this is a...
I think we've given you an awful lot of things to consider.
This is good, this is good, this is what we're looking for.
How much was it dated, in other words, you're doing an update of this one, how much were things dated, and you want to remove some of that because it was so annoying to have all these dated things that don't roll over, in other words, is there things that you were itching to get rid of, because you're like, ah, if I see one more, you know...
Well, references to the Industrial Development Authority are always nice, all the industry that's...
I was just kind of hoping we could avoid that this time, not create some headaches for you next, well, 10 years from now, who knows where I'll be.
Well, the transportation section, I'm sure, will be fun, since they're referencing studies all the way back to the 1980s, and collecting the list of all the new drainage and transportation improvements and studies, that is going to be an interesting process for next week, so we'll see how that goes.
I do like the idea that it's going to be somewhat smaller than the current document is ginormous.
I do have a request for these work sessions moving forward, when I get the, when I go to the city's website to the calendar, or get the push notifications of, there's a new event that's been added to the Pecosin government, it says, planning commission work session, but it doesn't have any description of it, or what we're going to be discussing this work session, so I would really like to request that maybe there's just a little blurb, we're going to be talking about the infrastructure portion of the comp plan update, and I think that there would be, so far, we really haven't had any attendees other than people from the boards or commissions coming to help us out, but for instance, last week with economics, I would think that people would be interested, oh, you're talking about the economics, or when we talk about land use or environment, I think people might be interested, and we might have more participation if we have a little bit of a blurb of what the public, or what the work session's about.
When I looked for tonight's meeting, because I wanted to know what time it started, I thought it said city council meeting tonight, and I really thought I was in trouble, I have a hard enough time with my wife, tell me what to do, it's like, oh, city council meeting, so maybe you can show me where you, I don't even see that you had a meeting tonight.
You know what, I get automatic emails when there's a new agenda or calendar for a public...
Yeah, I thank you all, productive, we got it done in 58 minutes, maybe a world record, I don't know yet, well, I guess we will see you all in two weeks from tonight.
I won't be here, darn it.
Yeah, and I...
I'm not.
I knew you, I knew you were not here for one, I just remembered it was one of the last.
Yeah, but I do hope to receive the documents by email, and will hopefully send my comments if I have any.
I can do the same thing, because I did not make comments last time, this time I already, last time something came up late and I couldn't make it, this time I already know I'll be here, so if you ship it my way, too, I'll try to comment.
Any other folks?
Yep, we're good.
Thank you much.
Thank you.